...to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the January 20th County Commission meeting. Remind you to silence your cell phones, that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender, and if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. We are going to start with Administration of the Oath by our Honorable Judge Pecus to our new Commissioner Jean Bender. If you guys want to just go down front, that'd be great.
(inaudible) I, Jean Bender, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. And I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties of my said office of Minnehaha County Commission. Congratulations.
And we are also going to do a recognition of an employee. Cindy, if you want to come up?
I'm going to present this plaque to Cindy Howard, Cynthia Howard. She has worked at the Public Defender's Office from 1991 to 1998, and she's been in the public defender's office from 98 until 2014. And I want to thank you for your many years of wonderful service in defending people in South Dakota.
Thank you. It's been a rewarding career, and I'm happy to be preparing the office so capable and (inaudible).
We'll move on to the routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any amendments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of January 13, 2015, the joint minutes of January 13, 2015, and the special commission meeting on January 16, 2015.
Move to approve all three.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve all three minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $487,982.32.
Move for approval.
I have a motion on the bills. Is there a second on the bills? Second. I have a motion and a second on the bills. Are there any comments? I have one comment, and that was that there was a bill for $40,000 to an outside attorney for representation in a criminal defense case. Just an example of what goes on in this county as we continue to pay for law enforcement issues. I have a motion, a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports, the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of December 31, 2014, the register of deeds, official statement of revenue collected in December 2014, and the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for December 2014. They have all been received and are on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion on routine action?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Carrie Deaver? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no applications for a bidding today. Item seven is notice and requests. Item A is to authorize a county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Project MC-255BR-14, a bridge structure replacement of 50-082-110 located on 255th Street between 462nd and 463rd Avenue approximately four miles north of Hartford. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This structure, we have completed the final design for this structure. It is shown on a map of the third page of your briefing memos. And then one thing that we added with this briefing memo, if you're able to pull it up on your iPad, there's a blue hyperlink in that second paragraph of the memo that should take you right to a Google map if you want to be able to zoom in and zoom out and, I guess more interactively, look at the location of where this structure is at. It is on a township road. The township road is north of Hartford and a little bit west, south of Colton, of Highway 151. Some of the key points of this structure, right now it's a 41-foot pony truss bridge, and it's very small. It's undersized, it is under load limit, it has a federal sufficiency rating of 24.2 out of 100, so it's a pretty poor-conditioned structure. And the average daily traffic that we do our traffic counts on is right now five vehicles per day. And so this one is the lowest-traveled structure that we have proposed to the commission for replacement. And I know that's been a hot topic of discussion for our structures in the past, and so we can certainly have more discussion on that today if you wish. We're proposing to replace the structure with an 82-foot structure at an approximate cost of $472,000 for construction. So with that being said, we are requesting today for permission to publish this in the newspaper as a notice to bidders for letting the contract on February 11.
Are there any questions for D.J. on this bridge? Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, five cars a day is pretty low. Is there any chance of making this a low-water crossing?
We have definitely looked at less-expensive options, including the possibility of a low-water crossing or a culvert or box culvert, something to that effect. It is west branch of Skunk Creek, which is the second or third highest-flowing waterway in the county, and so that's not feasible with this one.
Why are we going to an 82-foot from a 41 or 42-foot?
Now, a couple reasons. The existing structure is undersized hydraulically. And a second reason, I believe that the abutments are vertical wall abutments, so if you were standing along the waterway looking at the structure, the ends of it underneath the structure would be vertical like this, and it's less expensive for us to build a structure that has abutments like this and then a longer structure spanning that opening. And so those two reasons together are the reason that it got a lot bigger. And so we follow some design standards with hydraulics and structures both that determine what the size of the structure is, and that's how we came up with an 82-foot structure.
So it'll be about a half million dollars, we estimate?
Yep, just under a half million.
Equivalent engineering costs, okay.
Commissioner Benega.
D.J., obviously this doesn't have much traffic on it. Do you have a higher need and a higher traffic count than what you're projecting on this bridge so that we can look at alternatives to funding?
As far as alternative structures, there are several other structures. We have 200 structures, 199 structures right now, several of which require significant maintenance and replacement. This structure, being a 24 federal sufficiency rating, is probably one of the least we have in the county right now. And it is a pony truss structure, which if you imagine looking at an older-style bridge that has a truss above the traveling way and has steel members along the side of the structure. This is very, very narrow. It's not even wide enough for two vehicles to pass one another, and if one of those steel beams or steel members would be broken, it is fracture-critical, I believe, and so just one broken member could result in a failure of the structure. And so just because of safety and the size of the existing structure, it's a higher priority than with the lower traffic on it. And we do anticipate when we replace structures like this that the traffic will increase, maybe not significantly because it is a smaller township road, but it will increase when people are able to drive over it with their bigger equipment, their farm equipment, and so we do anticipate it will go up from five, maybe to 25 to 50.
Are there any questions for D.J.? Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval, for discussion.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for discussion. Comments? Commissioner Benega.
It seems to me that for right now, with the cost of, obviously, this bridge and five vehicles a day, for one thing, we don't have to worry about traffic, I don't think, meeting each other like you were worried about two-way traffic. That's probably not going to happen. There are alternative routes. I would prefer that we look at a higher need for a bridge and a higher traffic count, frankly, before we look at spending this kind of money for a bridge.
Commissioner Kelly.
I kind of agree with what Gerald just said.
This is a bridge that we had, I think, debated long and hard last summer before we even did the structural engineering audit.
That's correct, Commissioner. And, you know, we evaluate all of our structures on a pretty regular basis on need for replacement, and we have a priority listing that we have set up. And if the commission chooses not to replace this structure, we can certainly move on to the next one. But respectfully, our professional recommendation is to replace this structure at this time, given the ADT is low, but the structure is in very, very poor condition. And it has served on our township system for many, many years, and we feel like taking it away from the system, basically putting it out of service, would be a disservice to the residents.
Commissioner Benega.
How far out of the way would these five vehicles a day have to go to use a different bridge?
One mile. Oh, to use a different bridge? It would still be one mile because right there, Skunk Creek does go very north and south, if you will. So they would go north or south one mile, and they would cross a bridge on one of those roads.
If we, Commissioner Kelly.
How much do we have invested in this already?
I don't have that exact number in front of me, but for preliminary engineering and final engineering, I would guess that we're probably around $50,000.
That's what I remember, too, is around $50,000.
If we don't approve it today, will it just go farther down the list? It'll just get knocked back for it at this point?
Basically, the final plans are 100% complete. Our right-of-way permitting is all complete, and so these plans would, what we call "shelve", we would shelve them and wait for a better time to do the project. And we would hope that we could re-appropriate the money that we have budgeted for this structure and either put it towards a maintenance project or another replacement project if we were able to get something designed and ready for construction, maybe late fall or winter time next year, or later this year.
I had one more question on the load limits. Now, this is a 15-ton load limit.
Right now, it's currently posted at 15-ton, 24-ton, and 26-ton for the three different vehicle classifications.
So the bridges we replaced on 121, was it, 122?
Yes, 121.
Those had 6-ton load limits.
There was a 3-ton, I believe, and a couple 6-ton, yes.
Or 3-ton, yeah. You couldn't even drive your...
A Yukon.
Yukon over.
Right.
Are there still bridges in the county that have the 3-ton limit?
There are not any structures right now that are on the 3-ton limit that are not open to traffic, no. We had one that was still posted at 3-ton that was in our replacement program, so we've taken care of all of those. And so the lowest posting that we have now would be probably a little bit lower than this, but it would be up for replacement this year.
What was their federal sufficiency rating? Is that what you called it?
Federal sufficiency rating.
What was it on 121, those bridges?
Oh, gosh.
I mean, roughly, I don't... Was it more or less than this?
It was probably about this, maybe a little bit higher, maybe in the 30s.
But if we don't approve this, the engineering plans could wait till two years and still be good, is that right, roughly?
If we waited two years, what we would probably do when we start the project back up, we would ask our engineering consultant to do a review of the plans to make sure that they still meet any codes. There's code changes constantly in our line of business, and so we would make sure that they still meet the codes, maybe spend a couple thousand dollars on something like that, and then redo our bidding documents and update all the dates and the cost estimate and that kind of thing. And so we would have to invest a little bit more money, but I wouldn't say it would be a really significant amount of money.
So if we don't approve it, you'll go to the next project on your list, and perhaps we can wait and see one with the legislature does with Bridge Fund.
We could...
And whether there's any excess monies towards the end of the season, and I would prefer to do that.
Okay. And I would like to make one comment, too, if it's okay. I hadn't planned on necessarily talking about this, but Gerald and I had a meeting last week, and we talked about maybe having some sort of a philosophical discussion on bridge replacements on township systems. We've been taking a lot of township road traffic counts lately with our new traffic counters that don't get ruined in the gravel. They use a radar system, and so we can now take traffic counts on gravel roads a lot easier. A lot of the structures that are on township roads have significantly fewer ADT or traffic counts than we had anticipated based off of the State Department of Transportation estimates. And so as we start moving forward with some of these township road projects, you're going to see a lot more that are 5, 10, 15 per day. And so today, we're definitely considering this single structure, but moving forward, the commission is really going to be philosophically considering our entire township system. We have maybe 110 structures on the township road system. I would say that more than likely, 75% of them are in a boat just like this one, where they're not heavily-traveled gravel roads by Sioux Falls. They're out in rural areas where they don't see a lot of traffic unless it may be harvest season.
Okay. Commissioner Benega.
When D.J. and I did talk, my suggestion was at some point that he come before a regular county commission meeting, when maybe we generally have a building committee or something else, that we have him make a presentation and philosophically look at, frankly, a program that we can replace the bridges in a systematic approach, but more importantly, by that time, maybe we will have a better idea where the funding sources are coming from.
Yeah.
Right now, I think there's, you know, there's a number of bridges that he's kept track of, and with the average daily traffic being so low, I think we're going to have to use that as part of the priority on what gets fixed first.
Mr. Kelly.
I would suggest, I'll float a motion. I'd like to defer...
We have a motion and a second on the table.
We do already?
Yeah.
Okay, then just a comment. If we deferred this for a week, in case there's any, you know, the township has a big interest in this, or the parties that use the road have an interest in it, it would give them a chance to come and talk to us, and then next week we can take up action on it. If that's acceptable, I would make a substitute motion to defer for one week.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on a substitute motion to defer for one week. Any other discussion on the substitute motion?
And would you take care of making sure that the party didn't know?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on a substitute motion to defer for one week. Do that one first. Vote on the substitute motion first. All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Now, vote on the motion, the substitute.
And now a motion and a second has been made on the motion substituted. All those...
No, we need a motion and a second.
Oh, we need a motion and a second on, pardon me?
You have the substitute motion before you, correct?
Right. We just approved substituting that motion.
So you need to vote on that substitute motion itself.
Okay. I need a motion and a second on this.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. It's substituted for one week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no planning on zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson. The office has received a request for a compromise of lien submitted by two individuals who are in the process of buying a house together. The individuals are not married. Closing is scheduled for January 29th of this year, and the property again is being purchased here in Sioux Falls. During the title search, three county aid liens were discovered that need to be resolved prior to being able to close on this sale. The first lien is solely in the applicant, the name of the first applicant, dates from August 1990 through August 2010, and the lien is entirely for public defender services. Total amount is $3,011.15. Three small payments totaling $99.15 have been made on that lien that brings it to its present amount, and the last payment on that lien was made in August of 2010. The second lien involved here is against applicant, is in the name of applicant number two. The lien dates from February 1991 through February 2010, and that lien is for poor relief and public defender services. Present balance of the lien is $2,394.06. Partial payments totaling $830 have been made on this lien, again bringing it to its current balance, and the last recorded payment was made in February 2010. The third lien is listed in the name of applicant number two and her ex-husband. The lien dates from April of 1981 through May of 2014, and the lien is for a wide variety of poor relief services, court-appointed attorneys, services, public defender services. Present balance of that lien is $20,145. There have been a total of $2,234.47 worth of payments made on this lien over the course of its existence. In addition to that, actions of the county commission as part of the annual compromise lien action have reduced that balance by a total of $22,786.1. Obviously, this lien had been much higher than its current balance in the past. Again, the combination of payments and past compromises brings it to its current balances, current balance. Applicant number two, her name is on that lien as a result of marriage to a former husband, and they are now divorced. They were married in November 1998, divorced in February of 2003. The lien record shows that there were a total of $36,308.71 worth of liens incurred during the marriage, and $300 in payments made at that time by applicant number two's former husband, as well as a total of $23,546.66 in compromises. And again, that leaves it at its current balance. The biggest lien on the item on this lien is for a hospitalization in excess of $30,000. Record search indicates that applicant number two's ex-husband was the recipient of all the poor relief services provided during the time of the marriage, and he was the recipient of all services prior to and after the divorce. Now, the applicants here are requesting the commission consider the following actions. Bear with me, and if you have any questions, again, we can certainly go back. On the first lien, DPNO-25594, that's one in the amount of $3,011.15 in the name of applicant number one. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien in full with no payment. Applicant is currently employed at a painting business in Sioux Falls, has an annual salary of $21,060. It does not appear he receives a refund, lists assets of about $500 primarily as a form of an older automobile, and liabilities of roughly $13,000 in South Dakota and Minnesota. He's requesting, again, the lien be released with no payment. The second lien is in the name of applicant number two. Applicant is requesting, and this is in the amount, this is DPNO-31009, in the amount of $2,394.06. Applicant is requesting a lien release in full upon payment of $1,000. Applicant is currently employed in Sioux Falls, has an annual salary of $16,000, and did receive a refund, $4,250, but about $3,000 of that is being reserved for the cash required to close on the house. Assets and liabilities are about $4,000, representing the value and debt on the automobile. And the final lien, DPNO-7101, the amount of $20,145, that is in the name of applicant number two and her ex-husband. The applicant is requesting that her name be removed from the lien with no payment by her and left solely in the name of her ex-husband for the current amount. Applicant states that she and the other applicant, excuse me, and her ex-husband lived together for only six months during the time of their marriage, and that she neither requested nor received any of the services listed on this account. And again, the records have been checked with different various county departments that show the services were all received by that applicant's ex-husband. I would stand by for questions.
Are there any questions for Robert at this point? I have one, Robert. Is there any real estate involved in this at this point? Are these liens on any real estate? No. They're just on the person?
No, they are, the liens are attached to individuals.
Okay.
It is the function of title companies often that come through and make that attachment, and I will defer to Mr. Kappemeyer if he has any additional comments.
And what happens when that interest is on the person? If they acquire any interest in real estate or other property, that automatically attaches them? So I think the concern is going forward that if that is out there on the person, that will automatically attach any real estate that's coming down the bank?
Okay.
If that makes sense.
And you may have one of your applicants here that would like to address the commission if you went at the, when you're done with questions.
Commissioner Kelly.
Robert, on the second one, what was the original, the original full lien?
The second one that I described is DPNO-31009. Current amount is...
$2,400, roughly.
Yeah, $2,300.14.
And she's paid $1,800 to date.
Total payments of $300, excuse me, $830 have been made, and the last payment was made in February 2010.
Okay, and then she's willing to pay another $1,000, so she's in about 35% of the original lien, is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Robert at this point? Otherwise, I'll seat the applicant wants to speak. Okay. If the applicant wants to speak, you just even stay where you are. You don't have to stand up or identify yourself. You can say whatever you want to say.
I was just going to say that my ex-husband and I, we did, every time with the children and I would say, you know, six months after they were married, and, yeah, as I say, actually, one of those are his. And, yeah, I don't know, do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
As I say, if you have any, please come up when you first apply for a lawyer.
Yeah. Yes, just later. Right. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Benega?
Question for Kirsten, if I could. The two liens that were primarily for the ex-husband, can they be transferred only to his account?
Yeah.
Only the third lien be negotiated for her purposes of purchasing a house?
Okay, I want to make sure I understand which ones you're talking about. The ones that have both of their names on together, we're talking about the third, number three, correct, Robert?
Yes. That is 7101.
The one for, I'm sorry, I should have given you the amounts. The one for the $20,145, which is primarily is for only her ex-husband.
Correct.
And so is the one for $3,011.15, correct?
No, no.
No, I'm sorry, wrong one.
No. The $3,000 one is for the current person she's buying the house with, so a different person, third party.
And then the $23,940.6 amount is for both also?
No.
No.
$23.96 is for just...
Just her.
Yeah. So there's three people involved in this.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got the names mixed up.
So the joint one with the ex-husband is only number three relative to that? So the joint one with the ex-husband is only number three relative to that. I mean, to be clear, under state law, there is a duty to support when you have a spouse. So during the period of the marriage, they are technically enforceable. However, as a matter of equity, fairness, discretion, whatever you want to call it, state statute empowers you to compromise those for whatever reason you wish to do that. Just so we're clear on what the standard is here, you know, the applicant has presented those circumstances that you can consider in making that decision. But in making that decision, you can limit it to removing that lien against the applicant alone and leaving it against the ex-husband, which I think is ultimately your question.
Correct.
Yeah.
We're obviously going to take these one, one lien at a time so we don't get confused. Are there any more questions, comments, or do you want to start with doing a DPNO 7101 in the amount of $20,145? Are you, or do you have more questions?
On that particular DPNO 7101 for $20,145, I'd make a motion to transfer that solely to the ex-husband.
Okay. Do I have a second? I would second that. I have a motion and a second on DPNO 7101, the amount of $20,145,000 to remove from the applicant, and the lien would remain against the ex-husband who incurred these costs. Are there any other questions about this one? Are you ready for, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Okay, let's try the second one. Are we ready for the second one? This is DPNO 31009 in the amount of $2,394.06. This one, her compromise, she's paid $830 on this one already, and has offered a payment of $1,000 to clear this lien. Any other questions for Robert or the applicant on this one?
I'd move to compromise this upon payment of $1,300. I'll second that.
And a motion and a second for $1,300.
This would be pretty close, 50% plus or minus of the original lien.
Actually, is that right?
Well, the way I figured it, the original lien was about $4,200. Does that sound right, Robert? And she's paid $1,830 to date, or she's paid $830 to date, so another $1,300 would bring it up to about 50%.
Any other comments? Are you ready? I have a motion and a second to compromise for $1,300 on DPNO 31009. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And we have DPNO 255-94 in the amount of $3,011.15. This one is requesting compromise with no payment, and this lien is against the third party or second, did you call this the second party?
The other applicant.
The other applicant, other applicant. Are there questions?
Robert, did I read here somewhere there's back child support of about $30,000 on one of the, one of the applicants?
I'm not aware of the amount, but that is indicated in, in the briefing memo that...
The applicant has a comment, Robert, if you want to just let her comment on it.
I'd just like to say that the child support, you know, $10,000, you know, some, like, $3,000 in the, in the, seven hundred, one, each child support, two, three, four.
And if you look back at that show...
About 10,000. Was it about 10,000 in Minnesota, 2,000?
Minnesota, 10,000.
Okay, about 12,000. Thank you.
And he looked back on the minutes or on the notes on that, he's been paying extra amounts on his child support payments to try to come up current, and I think he's actually, I mean, I looked back through him, he's actually paid quite a bit more to try to become current with child support payments. So that's where his extra money's going. We'll be looking for a motion or a comment. Is there a motion on DPNO 255-94? There's a lot of it on here.
I'll move to deny.
I have a motion to deny. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion? Is there a motion?
There's no action on it.
And there's no action?
You could move, you could also move to defer it a week if you wish. When you have a fifth member, maybe.
Is there a motion to defer or a motion to act?
Since nothing coming forward, I, my concern is, you know, one, there's no payment, two is the child support issue. I, you know, with, even though they are trying to catch up at this point, it's still a back issue, and perhaps leave the mother somewhere with, on the welfare system simply because the father was not making the payments, so I, that's where I can't support it, hang on a minute. I'm having difficulty with the child support issue also, but I would defer it a week if we feel like there would be some other alternative.
What was the closing date? Twenty, so we still would have time to defer it for one week? Is there a motion to defer for one week?
I'll make a motion to defer it a week.
I have a motion to, I have a motion and a second to defer for one week to, on DPNO 255-94. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. So we'll have to defer the one for one week.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when anyone from the public may come forward and speak about any issue that is not on the agenda. And seeing no one, we will move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is consider a recommendation from the Public Defender Advisory Board to authorize the participation of the Public Defender's Office in the Gideon's Promise Law School Partnership Project. Tracy Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We are seeking authorization to participate...
Tracy, could you talk then to the Michael Fink?
Sure. We are seeking authorization to participate in the Gideon's Promise Law School Partnership Project. As I indicated in our memo, it is formerly known as the Southern Public Defender Training Center. It was created by Jonathan Rapping as a training program for public defenders. Last year, he was the recipient of the MacArthur Genius Fellowship Grant. Several of our new attorneys have participated in the training program. I participated in the leadership program several months ago. He asked me if our office was interested in participating in the Law School Partnership Project, which essentially allows for recent grads to go to offices and basically, we would recruit them to our office, and they would be allowed to work in our office for one year with no salary being required to be paid by our office. It would all be incurred through the program. All benefits would be through the program. The other added benefit for participating in the program would be, it would allow us to recruit from some of the top-ranked law schools in the country. It would also have a benefit of, one student per year would have their training paid for through the program instead of having the education program incurred through our annual budget. As indicated in the memo, I'm actually asking for two attorneys through this program in line with what I requested in our annual budget for 2015, which was two additional attorneys. By asking for two attorneys instead of the one, the added expense would be, unfortunately, we would have to pay $6,500 for the education and training component of the Gideon's Promise over that three years. When you consider the cost of annual salary of a new attorney, which is $52,000, and then you add the benefits, benefits for the entire year of, which is about $65,000, the cost of $6,500 for a full year of an attorney and the training and education for that attorney, it's a great benefit to the county. So basically, the first attorney would be no cost, and it would include education and training. The second attorney, it would still be their entire salary for a full year, but the cost would be $6,500 out of our annual budget. The other component, however, would be after the one year of service is done, the condition of being a participant in the program is, we would have to move them into a full-time position once that year of service is done, provided they're in full compliance with all the terms and conditions of being a full-time practicing lawyer within the state of South Dakota and meet all the requirements of Minnehaha County of being an employee within our county.
Any questions for Tracy regarding Gideon Foundation? Commissioner Bennica?
I don't have any questions, but, well, kind of a question. What's your success been at applying for these in the past? You've done that before, correct?
Not like, not, I have applied through the Bronx Defenders Program.
Okay.
That was a little bit different. We were just applying for a technical assistance grant, which was training for our attorneys. This is different. We're actually applying for attorneys to come here and actually have their entire year of salary paid for. I already know we would be approved ahead of time for at least the one.
Okay.
This is, Commissioner Kelly, did you have...
Couple of questions. Will, will they have to pass the bar before they come here?
Yes.
Okay, so they will be, so they will be attorneys?
Yes, they would be licensed attorneys, and they would have to meet the qualifications of practicing.
And are you short two attorneys now, or are you full on your, on your authorized positions?
We just had one attorney lead, Daniel Hager, so we are currently hiring.
Would this fill one of those, would this fill that, one of those, one of these fill that slot?
No, we are currently recruiting for new...
Okay, so what you said then is that we were forced, or if we accept this, we're going to be forced in our 2017 to authorize two more positions for your office?
Depending on whether you approve one or two.
Well, either way, but I mean, whatever, whoever we bring on, we are forced to, I mean, our hands are tied then as far as hiring. We have to hire two more or one more for 2017 when we do the budget this year, or 2016, I'm sorry.
Depending on the start date, these would be new grads, so the soonest they would be able to start would, you know, they take the bar exam in July, so more than likely they would probably be starting August 1st. But under state law, public defenders actually can practice law after they've graduated from law school, as long as they're eligible to sit for the next available bar exam. So the likelihood that they would be starting is sometime between May and August is the soonest they'd be able to start. So the one year would be May and, depending on the start date, would be about fall of 2017. As I indicated in my memo, we understand we can't tie the commission's hands as far as saying, you will grant us new positions in 2017. So given turnover within our office, you know, we do have steady turnover, given, you know, the work of a public defender. If it looks like when we get to that time when we're doing the budget of 2017, that we are not going to get approval for new positions, what we would have to do is, like with Daniel's position being open now, we would have to plan for that and say, okay, we're not going to fill this position because we, otherwise, we're going to have to let these people go, and we just would not fill a vacant position so that we would be able to keep those people on.
Commissioner Bender?
So what is the penalty if we fail to abide by the terms of this and we did not have a position available to them and we were not able to offer them a full-time position? What, is there a financial penalty involved or...?
There is, there is no penalty, but we want to maintain a good relationship with Gideon's Promise. They want to be able to keep this program going, and obviously, we don't want to put new law student graduates in a position to where they have to go out and look for new jobs. And talking with Mr. Rapping, it's, it's an honor, you know. We want to maintain a good relationship. Obviously, the next year, when we're applying again for new lawyers, they're not going to encourage attorneys or law students to come to our office if they know we're not going to hold up our, under the bargain. We want to keep that good relationship so that they continue to recruit new lawyers and we to still have that free one-year salary and for us to be able to continue to send our lawyers there. So that's, I think that's more the drawback than you violate the contract.
Okay. This is a, a program that we discussed quite, quite a few different, number of times in our liaison positions. Commissioner Bennica and I sit on the advisory board, and we have been encouraging their office, excuse me, to move forward with the Gideon's program. They have sent some of our staff to training there. This person is going to get their training for free through the Gideon's program, and we're already paying for it for our own staff. So we actually get quite a few bonuses through a program like this, and it does get our young graduates up and ready to go with a year of experience without us having to pay for them, and we'll just plug them in as we lose employees. We'll have somebody already trained and paid for by somebody else. Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question, Kirsten. What, now we've got an employee that isn't our employee, is that basically what this is? And what's our liability as far as due process charges or anything else with this person?
You know, we've discussed this, I believe Tracy's discussed this with Carrie in HR, and I've had some discussions with Carrie in HR as well. That's something that we are going to explore with this to understand what the relationship is. And as far as Commissioner Bender's question as to penalty for this too, we obviously want to have some discussions with Gideon's Promise about, you know, what the expectations are, maybe reduce this to some sort of writing. We've had discussions about doing that to define the terms of our, our relationship a little better. We've also, I've also brought up issues of, you know, malpractice insurance and supervisory authority and things like that. I think what Ms. Smith is bringing to you today is, is this something the commission is, is willing to pursue? I don't think anything is set in stone yet that, you know, if, if the offer is accepted that we have to, you know, go ahead without defining those, those, those points that we need to work out yet. But I, correct me if I'm wrong, if that isn't the sense of where it is right now?
Right, and just a general question about the liability and those sorts of things. And just in talking over the phone, they said different offices in law schools do it different ways. Some people want to have it so that, you know, the, the office, the county gets the check, and then they add the student to the payroll, and they say different offices just do it different ways, and that is something where...
Talk to them on the mic, would you please?
That's just something where HR and Kirsten would, would want to have a discussion with them, and I think they would be really amenable to working out the best way the offices feel comfortable.
And if I may, make a suggestion too, it might be something that you can, you frame this request today as, as authorization to pursue this, and maybe Ms. Smith and Carrie and I can bring this back to you once we have more of that definition, which law school we would be working with. I think that'll define the terms of what's going on here. Maybe you'd be more comfortable doing that, authorizing to pursue it, but maybe with some direction to bring it back. I don't know if that, that's something that Ms. Smith would be okay with, but...
And we know if we need, had a contract, I mean, we had to sign.
Right.
It would probably be better.
If, if the commission's more comfortable with that, I'm sure, I mean, I'd suggest that that's fine.
I'm not comfortable at this point until we get some more answers.
Because we don't even know if, we don't even know if two students would even want to come to Minnehaha County and deal with the snow in Sioux Falls. I mean...
Is there a motion to authorize pursuing the Gideon Promise Law School Partnership Project?
to come to Minnehaha County and deal with the snow in Sioux Falls. I mean...
Is there a motion to authorize pursuing the Gideon Promise Law School Partnership Project?
With, with the caveat that it comes back to the commission.
Well, it has to because it's just an authorization to pursue, so. Did you have a question, Commissioner Bender?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
Could I just, I guess what I'm looking for today is also the question of whether I have authorization for one or two because of the $6,500 out of our budget.
Do we, do we need, do you need the authorization on that part today for pursuing this?
Right, because one would be no cost whatsoever and the other one would be $6,500 out of our budget for 2015.
I'm just wondering why you need to know that answer today. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but Commissioner Benega?
Well, I'm sure that the program's going to ask for what your intent is. If it's one or two, does it mean that you're going to get both of those and we can make that part of the caveat, if you will, if we're going to decide if we're going to approve one or two when we get the contract? I don't know that we have to make, we can ask for them now. I'm not sure that we're going to get them both and if we do, then we can have the discussion about whether we want to pay the $6,500 or if we have that in our budget based on turnover or educational support or whatever. I think if we ask for both and we only get one, that conversation's pretty easy. If it's two, then we have to have a more in-depth discussion.
Is there a motion to authorize to pursue? If I understand exactly what we're pursuing, I would make a motion to authorize to pursue.
Okay. A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize pursuing the Gideon Promise Law School Partnership Program. All those, Commissioner Kelly?
Now, I want to clear that this is going to come back to the commission before any actions taken.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So you can move forward, move forward, we'll need contracts or whatever it is that Kirsten says we need to have or at least a better understanding so we can approve the moving forward with one or two positions.
I know that Gideon's Promise, because they're dealing with a number of law schools and students applying and they have deadlines to sign up for bar exams in different states, I think that's the question they'll have for me, is how many students?
Well, you better get some answers first, Ben.
Okay.
We can always bring it back next week.
And, but each law school will have different contracts and I don't know that they can tell me what the specifics are because it depends on which law school we get the student from.
Okay.
And that's between us and the law school, not necessarily Gideon's.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign professional services agreement for construction design services with Civil Design Incorporated for replacement of bridge structure 50-289-060 in the amount of $55,130. DJ Boothby.
Morning, commissioners. DJ Boothby, highway superintendent. Hopefully, this one is a little bit easier, more straightforward than, than the last one. This bridge is on a town, or on a county highway, paved county highway, county highway 114, about four miles west of Sherman. We have completed final design. We are waiting, I believe, on permitting for this before we request authorization for a notice to bidders and so that will be forthcoming. But this is for the professional services agreement for construction management or construction administration to observe and inspect the project when it's under construction this summer. The cost is $55,130. Estimated construction cost is about $480,000 right now. And again, we'll probably get an updated estimate when we get the notice to bidders request. So, does anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions, DJ, or Commissioner Kelly?
I just have one on the hyperlink. It isn't working.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea. Is it possible in the future, Trish, that it will work?
It worked on our iPads at our office and so I wonder, oh, they scan them.
So it would work on your computer at home, Trish?
No, it didn't work on mine.
Oh, it didn't, okay. Let's try it.
We'll work, we'll work with IT to make sure that they work next time.
Okay. It's kind of a neat idea. Are there any other questions for DJ on this bridge?
I'll move to approve.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, for the authorization, the service agreement for construction design services. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 12 is consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County's intervention in the matter of the application to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission by Dakota Access LLC for Dakota Access Pipeline Project, docket number HP 14-002. Kirsten Kettler.
All right, thank you, commissioners. I bring this item before you today to inquire about the narrow issue about officially intervening in the proceeding before the Public Utilities Commission relative to the Dakota Access Pipeline Matter. As you recall, you had a joint meeting with Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls, your governing bodies, to get a presentation from the applicants in this project. I believe you've received a lot of briefing materials on that, maps as to where this pipeline route is going to go and have gathered information about this project to date. To be clear, South Dakota law and these type of application proceedings, direct your attention to Title 49, Chapter 41b, that's what governs these type of pipeline applications. It gives the right of any local governing body over territory where the pipeline is proposed to be laid to be an official intervening party in these proceedings. What that gives you is official standing to bring forth any concerns or questions you may have of the applicant or any evidence you might have of relevant factors going forward with the, with the pipeline application. In statute, that's defined, and I kind of outlined that on the proposed application for intervenor status that I included in your packet. Generally, it revolves around environmental, social, and economic conditions and the changes that such a pipeline project would bring. Basically, the applicant has the burden of proof in proposing a pipeline project like this, that the proposed facility will comply with all applicable laws and rules and that does include any county, you know, zoning ordinances and things like that you have in the county, at least as far as above-ground structures, that the facility won't pose a threat of serious injury to the environment or social and economic conditions of the inhabitants or expected inhabitants of the area, that it won't substantially impair the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants, and that unduly interfere with the orderly development of the region with due consideration given to the views of the governing bodies. I think that's why you should consider having an official seat at the table, if you will, in having intervenor status. This allows you to directly bring any concerns about any of the factors that are relevant in this pipeline application directly to the Public Utilities Commission for consideration. You are given this right under statute. The deadline for doing this is February 13th. I bring this to you now to consider that narrow issue of whether to intervene in this project. Obviously, the other matters are, as to what you want to bring to the commission would be later legal strategy, things like that, but this is appropriate in a public meeting to consider authorizing that intervenor status.
Okay. Are there any questions for Kirsten on this?
I'm curious if there's a downside to authorizing this intervenor status.
If you were to ask my opinion, I would say there really isn't, except, you know, staff and, you know, and time expense and money expense in addressing these issues before the commission. But again, this gives us an official party status before the commission to bring, bring these issues directly to them if we wish to, to submit that evidence and give testimony before them.
So it just preserves the right to do that, doesn't require us to do that?
No, not at all.
Okay. Any other questions for Kirsten?
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the county to, Minnehaha County intervention in the matter of application to South Dakota Public Utilities Commission. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 13 is an update and status report of the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Robert Wilson, Minnehaha County Commission Office again, and I'm going to be very brief again this week on this topic. We did not have very many additional bills filed last week. We're still waiting for a lot of the committee assignments on some of the main bills that we're going to be watching. Again, Mr. McFarland, Ken McFarland is up in peer this week, going to be working on that as we believe that things really are going to get moving bigly this week. We expect to see a lot more bills and, and working on some of the larger pieces that have been talked about. What I have to, to brief you on this morning is fairly short. We've talked about the concern on a bill from the treasurer's offices, office, treasurers around the state on postage requirements to be charged for tabs and plates that are renewed out of county treasurer's offices but not out of, directly from the state. Again, we're still waiting for a bill, a committee assignment on that. We've talked about some of the, one of the highway and bridge funding proposals that's been introduced, again, waiting for a committee assignment. Couple that I did want to bring to your attention, one is Senate Bill 32, an act to revise certain provisions regarding veterans' preferences for all veterans who are United States citizens who seek employment with a state, a county, or a state, a county, or a municipality. And really, the change that this bill would direct is that as, through our hiring practices, where currently a preference has to be given to veterans who are a U.S. citizen and a resident of the state, it looks like that would be changed to no longer require the residency requirement and it would simply be a citizen of the United States. We're following that. That one does appear to have been referred to State Affairs and appreciate Carrie Dever in Human Resources alerting us to that. We'll, we'll keep an eye on it. And that's, that's really the, the bill of substance that I saw added this week that we will, will need to watch. I'll stand by for any questions. If you have questions on any other bills that, that are, have been filed or that we expect or, or activities this week related to legislative actions.
Robert?
I have a question. Just, I didn't, excuse me, completely understand, excuse me, hostile 10:20. So currently, we already charge the $1 and the $5 for the tabs and the plates in Minnehaha County. So the state is thinking about doing it and if that passed, then would they charge those fees and we wouldn't see those fees? I mean, I don't understand how that works.
Okay, and I, I think you might have been...
Sleeping at the wheel?
Well, no, I, well, the concern that's been brought to me is, and our, our treasurer's office already charges these, these amounts for renewing by mail, for postage and handling when the individual renews either license tabs or the plates. So for our actions, it would not, it would not change our practices. It would direct that county treasurer's offices across the state could charge this amount as postage and handling for renewing by mail. The difference would be that if somebody renewed plates or tabs directly through the state, through Department of Motor Vehicles, then that, they would not be charged that $5 or that $1 fee, but the reimbursement for that would come out of a, would come out of the license plate renewal fund. And the concern from, that some of the treasurers have admitted, have expressed is that that is a fund that at, at the end of the year, any proceeds that are left in that fund are rolled over into the local government highway and bridge fund. And so potentially, there could be a revenue loss there that if that, if there, if there's less, if that's where the postage expenses are being paid for the tabs and plates that are renewed by the department, there is less to roll over into this local, local fund. And I, our, our association is aware of these concerns and I know they are looking to touch base with the bill sponsor and try and address some of these, but that, that's, I heard that concern come up last week and we've addressed that with the association and we will, we'll watch it as it's assigned and goes through committee. That, is that clear with the concerns?
I think that makes sense. Okay.
Just a comment on that. It sounds to me like the state wants to send them for free and then they're going to make the counties pay for it because they're going to take it out of the revolving fund, which is money that goes back to the counties. So it doesn't make any sense to me that, I mean, you say, "Okay, well, you can save the five bucks by going to the state and the state will just really effectively charge it back to the counties." So I, I agree with the treasurer's concern on this.
Are there any other questions on legislative bills? Okay. The next item is new business.
Liaison reports.
Oh, liaison reports.
Are there any liaison reports?
And the new assignments are out. Commissioner Benega?
I was going to just say before DJ had brought it up earlier, is that I think it would be important for us with the issues that we're facing with highways and bridges that we, just like we do with the building committee, maybe have a monthly conversation with highway superintendent about the updates, not only of the, of the funding sources, but more importantly, about prioritizing roads and bridges and have a philosophical conversation about what's important and the number of transportation vehicles that are being, using these. And frankly, the other piece of that is potentially how townships might be part of the conversation and funding because in some cases, they have more money than we've got and they're asking us for financial support on occasion and I think that we need to set some sort of policies as far as how we're going to solve this problem.
Great, I agree. Any other liaison reports?
Was I correct? Thanks.
The next item is new business. Mr. Schultz.
Good morning, commissioners. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ben. Last week, I misspoke. I have to correct myself.
Uh-oh.
I said something about our maintenance staff not being, having the equipment and the knowledge to maintain gravel roads. Well, they're upset by that.
[laughing]
And also, justifiably so. I mentioned the two miles east of, of the county, or excuse me, far west in the county, Highway 114, 253rd Street. Those two miles, we do farm out to McCook County. The reason we do that is not because our staff doesn't have the knowledge, skills, and abilities, it's because it's so far away, it doesn't make sense for us to take our motor grader and go out there and do that and come back. So I apologize to the staff and I wanted to correct that for the record.
Thank you. Were they watching that they heard that? They must have been.
And the paper, also.
Oh, the paper said it.
It was a nice quote from the paper, but just to be fair to our staff, I had to correct that. They are knowledgeable and they do have the equipment, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Shannon.
At risk of going to court, I drove out that, I drove on that road and it's interesting, to say the least.
Which, which road, the one?
The one, Maple Avenue.
Maple Avenue?
Yeah.
Any other, new business? Any old business? Say none. I would look for a motion to adjourn it to executive session for legal briefings and personnel.
Don't move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.